Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the Dighton Board of Health for Wednesday, September 21st, 2016. Call this meeting to order at 6:34. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you got -- I'm looking at the Board of Selectmen's. Is that the Board of Health chairman? Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the regular meeting minutes of August 17th, 2016.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commonwealth of Massachusetts proclamation. Where is the Commonwealth's experience with and susceptibility to severe weather and natural hazards such as floods, blizzards, hurricanes, and tornadoes compounded by the continued risk of potential terrorist attacks, pandemics, and other hazards, both natural and man-made, demonstrates the ongoing need for Massachusetts to prepare for a broad range of emergencies? And whereas the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, which includes the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, the Massachusetts State Police, the Department of Fire Services, the Department of Public Safety, and the Massachusetts National Guard, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, including the Department of Public Health, have the responsibility to protect safety, minimize the loss of life and property, and protect public health by preparing for, responding to, and recovering from disasters or emergencies. And whereas the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, the Department of Public Health, and other public safety partners are promoting personal, family, and community preparedness in the month of September to build resilience, help reduce casualties, and minimize the economic impacts of disasters in our communities and in our state. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident of the Commonwealth, families and individuals are urged to make preparedness a priority by following four simple steps: build a kit, make a plan, be informed, and get involved. And whereas all residents of the Commonwealth are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities and ask to use the preparedness resources at www.mass.gov/ready. Now therefore, I, Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2016 to be Emergency Preparedness Month and urge all the citizens of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance, given at the Executive Chairman in Boston the first day of September in the year 2016 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 240th. His Excellency Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth; Karenie Polito, Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth; William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth. God save, excuse me, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
His Excellency.
Yes. By His Excellency, that's what it says. He signs Charles, not Charlie. Announcements?
We only have a few announcements here tonight. There will be a flu shot clinic on Thursday, September 22nd, that's tomorrow, at 10:00 a.m. to noontime in the lower level of Dighton Town Hall. You must be 18 years or older, and please bring your insurance cards. If you have any questions, please contact Tiffany Lopes at (508) 676-3370. These shots are provided by Rite Aid Pharmacy and hosted by the Dighton Council on Aging. Zika virus information.
Okay. Yes, just, I'm not going to read all of this stuff, but we have continued to receive regular updates and information about the state of health. That's West Nile. Let me do Zika first. I have a number of pamphlets here. If anyone is interested, this particular article is from the National Institutes of Health. This is a publication I receive at home, and I brought it in. So this will be available at Town Hall if anyone wants to read this. This talks about how it's transmitted, and symptoms, and things of that nature. And then this one is an article, this is the NACCHO Exchange newsletter, and this one is entitled "How Two Local Health Departments Have Responded to the Zika Virus." So if anyone's looking for information on the Zika virus, we have it here, and it will be available in the Selectmen's office. Thank you.
And the last announcement, regular monthly meetings of the Board of Health will be held on the third Wednesday of each month with special meetings scheduled as needed.
Next item is old business. Review Discuss Act Award Trash Bag Bid. Thank you. You're welcome. Would you like to review the bidding process we used? That was the summary of the bids as they came in.
The Dighton Board of Health did solicit bids for a contract for the trash bags that we purchase in the course of a year for the upcoming FY17. We received one, two, four bids back. The bidders, in this case, were given the specs. They were consisting of cases of small bags, cases of large bags. We asked for prices of bags that you would tie, like the ones we have now, on top of the tie, and a drawstring bag to see what the difference in the prices were. They were all asked for certain sizes that, so that the prices could be uniformly bid on, and the cases would be made up of 250 bags. The bidders were Mansfield Paper, second company was Waste Zero, the third company was Tags Bags &amp; Containers, and the last bidder was Boxes &amp; Bags Unlimited. I'll start off with Mansfield Paper. A case of small bags, their price was $33.22. A case of large bags was $52.80. And these were with ties. Waste Zero, case of small bags, $31.20. Large bags, a case $47.25. And these, again, were with ties. Third bidder, small case bags, $29.50. Large bags, $46.25 per case. And these small were with ties, all wave handles. Now, you may see this, in the near future, this is the only company that has these out there for wholesale purposes, for the municipalities. They are like four wings on the top of the bags, and you can tie all four together to close the bag, or you can use two, or three, or whatever. It's the same sized bags as we're using right now, where you don't have to fuss with trying to crump a little neck onto the top of the bag after it's full to put a twist tie on it.
This is a sample bag. We're going to go with clear. They won't be green, but as you can see, these are called wave ties. There are four of them. So you can either tie the bag corner to corner, or you can bring all four of them together and tie it in a knot. And you won't lose bag space because these are long enough to actually close the bag, and you can actually stuff it up to the top. So this is what a wave bag is. This is an alternative to bags with ties. This is the, this is the large size.
And the final bidder, a case of small bags, $30.92. A case of large bags, $51.35. So our lowest bidder, not to overlook the drawstrings, there were only two companies that gave us prices on drawstrings, and they were anywhere from $9 to $12 a case more than what we're paying now, so it's not cost effective for the town to go with the drawstrings. So we're going to try these wave bags. Little bidder for both the small and the large bags was presented by Tags Bags &amp; Containers.
Can you just read those numbers again for?
Small case of bags, $29.50. Case of large bags, $46.25. Madam Chairperson, at this time, I would like to make a motion to award the bid for the FY17 trash bag purchases to Tags Bags &amp; Containers for both small and large sized bags.
The wave bag?
The wave bags.
Motion's been made?
Seconded that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Ferry, do you have a recommendation now that you've seen the product?
No.
Man, a few words. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. New business. Review Discuss Act. Meet with the Animal Control Officer to discuss complaints, code violations at Bedford Street. Have you been up there before?
No.
Just in case. I'll give 36, just in case. Number 36.
So, I was called out, myself and the health inspector went out to 235 Bedford Street. We had complaints of mice and rats in the neighborhood, so we went out to check to see what was going on. There was also a complaint of a large amount of animals on that property. And I did go and find out how big that property is. It's 8,712 square feet. And on that property, she had three adult pigs, nine piglets, many rabbits in a shed, three goats, seven chickens, all walking around on that piece of property. Now, when I got there, nobody had food or water. Rabbits didn't look like they had had hay for a while. I asked her about hay. She said that it was in her car. I did not see it. She also has at least three animals in the house as dogs. I only saw one, but they were, she said the chihuahuas were on the kennel because they're not very nice. The goat, one of the goats had a small wound on its head that I told her that she needed to treat. The two female pigs that just had piglets had eye infections. And as I said, she had numerous rabbits that hadn't been fed or watered, I would say, in a couple days because the water bowls were dry. But we did not find any signs of mice or rats, which is why we went out there.
What's the other, the other animal you had? Was it two pigs that had eye infections?
Yes, the two female pigs that had piglets past couple weeks.
So what happened?
Well, I have not met her over there again. She is avoiding me for other reasons. As I, as far as I know, everything's still on that property except for maybe the three goats because she was bottle feeding those goats, so those were going back and forth to the other property that she also owns. So I have not been, she will not speak to me at this point because of other. But if, I do have a recommendation that all the animals be removed from that property. There's not enough property there for those animals that she has.
Removed from that property and then sent to the property?
They can't go to the other property. There's no room there either.
Okay.
Has MSPCA been called on this latest event?
Yes. I am supposed to write a report, and we were going to attach it with the other. And if we couldn't, we would take out new charges.
Is the other property, it's not in town?
No, it's in Rehoboth.
Right. Okay.
I've been by that one. There's animals living on roofs because there's no ground space.
Was it a reindeer?
No, no. I saw some animals, and I wondered how they got on the roof, except the buildings are relatively low. But everything is dirt, and there's many animals there.
Do you have a timeframe for getting back to this?
I don't know if she's going to allow me back on the property after she got served. I'm assuming that after the 29th, after we speak with the judge, he will allow me back on the property.
Do we know if she has taken any steps to put out food and water? Did she do it that day when you were there?
She didn't, she only fed the goats, bottled fed the goats while I was there. Nothing else was done while I was there.
What about water?
Nope. She hadn't given anything, and she has chickens roaming around and pigs. Usually, there's some kind of, you know, leftover feed. There was nothing on the grounds or anything, which is very unusual, especially for pigs.
So it's, there's a court appearance the 29th?
29th of this month.
For the previous?
For the previous charges. But what I'm, Chelsea's, what the MSPCA is hoping, that when we meet with the judge, that she can add these to that charge. If she cannot, she said we will take out other charges.
We're, we don't know if she has done anything to feed or water the animals. What is our position if we were to send you there with a police officer?
I would have to look to see if, what the animals looked like. If I felt they were in imminent danger, I would have to take them, bring them to the vet.
Can she refuse if you go with a police officer?
She can, at this point. I have to, I'd have to leave what they recommend you do. You leave a note telling that you want to see her, and then she has 24 hours or 48 hours to get back to you. At some point, I would need to get a warrant unless I felt that animals on that property were in imminent danger.
If you were standing on the street, can you see these animals?
No, they're behind a fence. If I stood on somebody else's property, I could see the animals.
Are you not able, from that visit, to determine if they're in imminent danger?
At that point, they were not in imminent danger. If she hasn't fed or watered them since then, yes, most definitely. None of them were in imminent danger unless she did not treat the eye infection of the pigs, or hasn't fed anybody, or wasn't keeping up with the rabbits.
When you have an animal that size, I mean, an adult pig is a good sized animal, do you have the vet come to your property?
Usually.
Okay.
Usually. That's, that's difficult for us to do with her. She does not do that very well.
But, but if I, if I were the owner of these animals, and you came and inspected and said to me, "You've got to do something about those two pigs. They got eye infections," would I be able to call a vet and say, "I need medicine"?
The vet would come out to make sure.
Oh, they wouldn't just prescribe it?
They wouldn't prescribe medicine for something like that. Matter of fact, she told me that was normal after kids, after pigs farrowed, that they got eye infections like that. The eyes look like that after they have piglets. So I don't think she would have called the vet.
Is, is there any substance to that remark that you're aware of?
Not the way, not the way the eyes were looking, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I miss something? Did she say, when you, you obviously pointed out that they needed treatment?
I said to her, I said, "Both those pigs look like they have eye infections." She goes, "Oh, no, that always happens after they have piglets. No, they look like they have eye infections."
So the other question is, how big were the piglets?
Piglets at the time I was there were two weeks old.
So they can't be removed from the?
They cannot be removed from mom yet. She says she has buyers for all of them. Matter of fact, she had said that within the week that we were there, she was going to have the male pigs castrated so she could sell them. She's never had that done before because she has a male pig on the property plus the two female pigs, adult pigs.
Okay. So the, of the male, of the litter? Okay, she's, did the little pigs look healthy?
They looked healthy, but if mom's feeding them, and mom, mom will, you know, just like any animal, mom, they will kill themselves to feed their babies, so as long as mom's giving them milk, which at this point is all they would be getting, not regular food. If they were just relying on regular food, I probably wouldn't have seen as healthy piglets as I did.
What is the earliest that she, those baby, those baby pigs can leave that area, if she's going to sell them?
If she's going to sell them, probably six weeks.
Okay.
We give them up to, up to three months in our statute.
So eye infections are contagious in humans. Is it the same in pigs?
Depending on the infection. It may be just, it may be something that's zoonotic that people can catch. It may be just pig catch kind of thing. I don't know. I wouldn't know unless a vet would get it.
I wouldn't be more concerned that the piglets might, you know, be more susceptible to catching something like that, and you remarked that two pigs looked like they had it, which, you know, might be suggestive of some sort of, I don't know, spreading amongst the close quarters.
Right. Piglets at the time did not have anything like that, so.
Well, what was the, what was the date you were up there?
I don't have it in my notes.
Would you, would you feel comfortable going back to that house with a police officer?
I feel comfortable going back out. As I said, she does have the right to refuse at this point, though I don't think she thinks I'm part of the charges, so she might let us, let me on the property at this point. She won't let MSPCA on the property.
I didn't realize you could keep them off.
You can if behind a door and it's not imminent danger. They, they walk a very thin line. Chelsea's very good about, you know, asking for permission to go on, so anything that we do find is admissible in court.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, and I don't want to go on the property and not have anything that I do admissible in court.
Well, and my other thought is, if you go with a police officer, just the fact that you have a police officer with you, whatever happens, first of all, you have a witness with you, and secondly, maybe she would allow you to go on. I think if you go out on your own, you're probably going to get grief. By the same token, if you can see the animal area from another yard, and the property owner would let you just look over the fence or whatever is there, and then you could give us some kind of an update, because between now and the 29th, it's quite a few days. It would be good to know if those animals are being fed and watered.
And I do have pictures. I did take pictures of everything that I saw on the property.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or anything? Okay, so if you would follow up and give us a report after you've been out there and let us know if you're allowed to look over the fence or even go on the property?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is Review Discuss Act on a Student Intern for the Board of Health. We received a volunteer application, and I have called the young man who expressed interest in doing some volunteer work as part of a educational program. He hasn't gotten back to me. I gave him my phone number, both here and at home, and also my email address, so I will continue to try to reach him. But this is part of a program he's in. He's working on a degree in political science, so I will try to follow up and catch up with him. Next item is Review Discuss Act on Disposal Rate for Large Amounts or Large Loads of Trash. Mr. Ferry, you don't get a new number because you've already been up there. You only get one number.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for what's in the agenda here outright. I didn't do any homework to investigate surrounding towns or anything like that.
That's okay. What I told the board was that you had mentioned this when we had gone to that meeting, and we were talking about the meeting that we had gone to, and about the recycling and all that, so that's why this is on here. We didn't expect minor details or anything, but it would be an opportunity for you to express about the rates we currently have for taking stuff in there, and what happens when volumes are brought in, like trailer loads.
Right. That brings up a pretty healthy conversation. I'm not familiar with the nuts and bolts and the finances when you guys pay the bills and how the rates were set, but if I am correct, the rates that we charge to enter the transfer station, to use the transfer station, helps offset. It doesn't pay the whole bill.
No.
Okay. With, with that also said, we are, as we, we know in that conversation, we have an influx of large loads coming in also, estate cleanouts, and some questionable repeat use of large trash, which I have a list, you have that list also. Looks like this. Needs to be investigated. I don't have addresses on them. Some of it's just yard waste, but as you see, our brush pile is quite large right now. So it's, question is, is these business use or just residential, so we need to give that attention, that part. As far as policing and investigating home addresses, I would think that's under your direction. Maybe I'm not the right person to do that, to see what's, what's really, where it's coming from. I mean, if it's under your direction, I don't mind doing it.
Are you talking brush and stuff?
Brushing, also large volumes of questionable clean, estate cleanouts or just cleanouts.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Those are traceable, but, I mean, as far as the, the brush, anybody can bring brush in there as a stance, so how do, how do we track that?
I wouldn't think we're accepting businesses.
No, we're not supposed to?
That's what I'm questioning. It might be a small business. I have two, in particular, repeat, people, I figured out what the address was, and I haven't found the vehicle on their property yet that they're using coming theirs. So obviously, I would need to go to the police station, run the plate, see what's going on, you know, that type of stuff, and I'm not going to do it without your direction. But back where we started, it's important to review or reassess our fees that we're charging to use the facility, especially if it's a business. Yeah, they might be paying for the load coming in, but it's offsetting the cost to dispose of it, and then it's the whole town is taking up the difference to pay for the remainder, right? So that's, wouldn't be fair, so there's a couple of things that are concerned that needs to be reevaluated.
Okay. So if you could look into this further, and, and when you're ready to report back to us, just let, let us know, all right? And you would be looking at, if you can, identifying some of the owners of vehicles that bring in, let's say, larger than normal loads?
Yep.
I think, I think in the case of, of estate cleanouts, if household goods and furniture and trash and all that stuff is being brought in, in, in large quantity, we charge for a one-day permit, the fee is, is it $10 or $15? In other words, I buy a permit for the day and I can keep coming back?
Yeah, but.
Or do I pay by my?
It's $15, answering your question.
Okay. Now, I have five pickup trucks full. Do I also pay for each pickup truck?
The contents, yes.
My thought is that it's not fair or practical for the rest of the people in town to actually be footing the bill for the rest of this, because if I come in five times Because if I come in five times with my pickup truck and I pay my $15 and I've got a truckload of, I've got truckloads of furniture, I am charged for each one of those pieces of furniture, aren't I?
Yes.
If it's especially the mattresses, the refrigerators and all that.
Right.
To me, I think it would make more sense in an estate cleanout that I would hire a dumpster, you know, a big dumpster thing and just pay for that rental and just get that whole thing taken care of.
The other thing is estate cleanup, who's the resident? Cause this is supposed to, we're providing this for residents, so if it's, they may not even live in town.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And, and the, and the, the worst part of it is, number one, we end up with all of this stuff that has to be disposed of, sorted and disposed of depending upon what it is. Uh, the amount of money taken in is not going to cover it and, um, the town is going to end up picking up the, the cost. If I brought you in, as, as we know from that meeting the other day, they talked about all of the televisions and CRTs that they've got stored because there's no place to get rid of them or the price is that they get for these units, um, does not offset the cost. So, if I showed up with my pickup truck with CRTs, old televisions and all of that stuff, even if I give you $10 apiece, it's not going to take care of what it's going to cost.
No.
I mean, I just saw a bill today for disposal of television CRTs. Uh, it's a lot of money.
And, and what they discussed in the meeting, the TVs don't stop. They just, we just had that cleanup. There's already probably a dozen TVs came in since that cleanup.
We're paying 18 cents a pound for each truckload. We're paying a delivery charge. We're paying a transportation charge. I looked at the whole breakdown and I thought, "That's a lot of money to get rid of." Uh, and I can understand where those companies are coming from because, um, they're not getting anything for the component parts. The glass has to be removed from each unit because it's got lead in it. And the smaller the unit, the worse it is. And, um, and all of that's got to be done before they can ship it out of the country to somebody else who wants the junk. Um, okay, so, uh, okay, Tom, if you can continue to look into that and if you talk to other communities and find out how they handle these things and when you, when you're ready to report back to us with a recommendation or whatever, so that we can look at this and, uh, uh, if we're going to change rates, increase rates, make new rules, we got to at least announce it three times, but we'll get the word out to the public.
Yeah, the thing along with that would be the, the spring cleanup that the hydraulic pump does.
Mm-hmm.
You charge the rate appropriately if they're using a transfer station, but you're waiving that transfer station sticker price also.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where the items are going.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's, might be something we add, overlook, or maybe that's just something you're offering to the public. I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So, may, maybe the stickers that are sold maybe need to be reassessed also.
When we were at that meeting the other day, uh, the people sitting to my right were from Falmouth.
Yes.
There were three of them. And when we were talking, uh, and I said, uh, "We do not pick up curbside furniture and televisions and all that good stuff on a regular basis. We have one day a year we call bulky pickup. If you have those things, you can take them to the landfill, but you got to pay for it." They were appalled to hear, "We don't pick them up as part of our regular trash." Uh, now, I know in Totten they do, but I said, "You got to realize, we're a small community. We're not a big city." And obviously in a big city, if everybody put those things out there and they weren't taken, there's a big problem. But I says, "We're able to manage this, but even so, it's an expense because you never get enough money to cover the cost of getting rid of it."
Okay.
So, okay, very good. And does anyone else have any comments or questions? Thanks, Tom. Uh, next item, under new business, discuss, reveal, review, discuss act on a letter regarding smoking on municipal property.
Hi, guys.
Have you been up to the-
I have not.
Oh, you're on number 37.
Wow. Does maybe it cough in, can I cough in?
There'll be no-
PC 37.
I was reading a thing about Bill Gates and he, um, somewhere, it's not a museum, but took a tour of his elementary school and he carved his initials under his desk and for the, his, whatever grade he was in, his desk was still there with his initials.
With his initials?
That was pretty cool. Who would have known then that, um, you know, he would have gone on to become what he did? But, um-
Well, the rest of-
They talked about finding him now for destruction of school property.
Plus interest. Plus interest.
He was worth like $40 billion.
You aren't the first one who thought he might carve his initials in that. That was the first person who stood there, who happened to be the police chief.
No, no way.
Yeah.
Uh, anyways, that's very nice. Bristol, Bristol, unbelievable how, uh, I mean, take it to the high school when you have, uh, town meetings and stuff. It's, it's a nice feature. Anyway, I, I sent this letter to you guys on the, the, at the end of July. I don't mean to be disrespectful by saying you guys, but it was so informal. Um, one, my concern is the smoking, uh, that goes on at the low level entrance. It doesn't seem to be as bad since I sent this letter to you, but it's still happening. Um, I don't know what the town bylaw is, if there's even one, or what a state ordinance is for the amount of space, uh, that is, uh, that you cannot smoke on from the distance from a building entrance. Uh, the state seems to have these state building ordinances, 100 feet, um, and, and certainly in an area where it can't vacuum itself back into a hallway, but it doesn't necessarily spell out what a town building has to be. But I find it very offensive to walk in or have to walk through, uh, sometimes as many as three employees, uh, smoking at the back entrance. And not only am I amazed that they smoke there, uh, because the public uses that entrance, uh, I'm also amazed that, uh, the amount of time and the same number of employees I see standing there and I also, and with that I question, is this coming off of their break time? Is, are they just, whenever they feel like they're going out and, and having a cigarette? But, uh, probably in addition to the smoking that you have to walk through, the thing I found most offensive is when I saw one of our employees extinguish their cigarette on the side of the building. And, um, I, I'm amazed that that's not considered destruction of town property. Maybe I joking around about covering our initials here in the desk, but did you see the block mark that's there? Uh, that they just literally take and extinguish their cigarette, uh, not even on the ground. It's, it's, it's nicely put into the trash bin that's there, but it's extinguished on the side of the building. So, I don't know, again, what our town bylaw would be, but we have to, uh, change what's happening there because I don't want to continue walking through, uh, secondhand smoke. I'm a cancer, uh, survivor of cancer. As some of you well aware, I can't walk with my replacement knee yet, so it's not great for me to come down the stairs just to avoid somebody who's smoking at the back entrance. But, um, the fact that we asked the public to come through that same entrance that I come through and, uh, and to walk out seeing black marks on the side of our building, I think, um, doesn't serve well for our town.
Tom, is there a bucket of sand out back?
Yes. There is a bucket that says cigarette butts or something to that effect on it and, I don't see cigarette butts on the ground. I'm assuming that it's being used.
But, does it contain sand so that you wouldn't have to put a cigarette out against the building or put it on the ground and step on it? You could just dunk it in the, in the sand?
I think it's always been there too.
Like Peter said, it's better than putting them on the ground, you know? That's why most entrances even to, um, city buildings and courthouse and every, they'll have a receptacle there, you know? They don't want them on the ground either.
Right. It's basic, basically for people to put it out as you're walking in.
Right.
Not to stand there and smoke a cigarette. Um, and I know on, on some places you do. I can't believe it. Yesterday I walked out of a medical building, there's signs everywhere, "No smoking." And the first thing somebody did in front of me was light up a cigarette. And I got this mouthful of smoke that took like four hours to get that taste out of my mouth. Uh, and, um, now, here it is, you're in a medical building and, and some of these people look like they, they're on their deathbeds, but they, they, they light their cigarettes. And I'm not offended by anybody who smokes. I just don't want to have to breathe the, the secondhand smoke as I'm walking through to, to come into work. And that's what I feel like I'm doing. I mean, I come here and, uh, uh, to, to serve the town and, um, it's, it's just disheartening to see how it's, the building is treated and the fact that you walk through this smoke.
What we can do, Peter, is first of all, check to find out about state regs. I agree with what you're saying. I was appalled to see, um, at UMass Worcester, there was a smoking area set aside. This was years ago. I don't know if they've gotten away, gotten rid of it. I have also been on campuses that say absolutely no smoking inside or out. Back in the eighties, I can remember, um, on a cross-country trip going to the Mayo Clinic, every park bench, every trash can, every place on the campus, this was in the eighties. There's no smoking allowed at all on that campus. And when I came back, I can remember at the beginning of school remarking, "First place I have ever seen, medical facility," which makes sense, but certainly a world-known medical facility, basically is, "Don't smoke on our property anywhere." And, um, so that they were way ahead of the learning curve.
Sure.
So, I think what we'll have to do is check to see if there are any state regs relative to distance from a public building.
There is for state-owned properties. Everything from even what state, the state leases.
But I'm wondering about, I'm wondering about public health.
I think there is.
It, it, yeah, it probably-
I don't know of a town bylaw, but-
I don't think we have anything.
We don't, we don't.
But, um-
I think it's 15 or 20 feet for town buildings.
Uh, most likely is and it goes, it defines everything and if you go into state regulations from what's covered, you know, if there's a covered structure with no walls or, you know, uh, or, uh, everything, if you have a fan, but nothing seems to, the only thing it says about towns is if there's a stricter code for the town, look up the town so that you know you, you might have stricter bylaws-
Right.
-than you would with a state ordinance. But, uh, anyway, that was, uh, and the other thing I wanted to ask, uh, and I didn't want to interrupt you guys earlier, tomorrow's flu shot, is there a fee for anybody?
No, that's why they're telling you to bring it, your pass.
Cause most insurance-
Just like if you walk into a Minute Clinic-
Right.
-or, or even the Somerset, uh, the Somerset Swansea Walk-in has a special place set up-
Yeah.
And all they do is take your insurance-
Right.
-because Medicare covers it and your other insurance, if you don't have Medicare, will cover it as an immunization. So, I guess there's no preregistration. They just, you just show up.
You can go to CVS or any, Rite Aid that you have-
Right.
-at any time and just ask for the flu shot.
Yeah, yeah. As a matter of, those drugstores, pharmacies do a number of shots now, pneumonia, hepatitis, shingles.
And, uh, a friend who's a pharmacist and they're graded now on how many they, they do a year.
How many immunizations?
Yeah. They're pushed, like, uh, salespeople to constantly push, um, these shots. And I don't think it's because they're concerned about the health. I think it's more of a, uh-
Well, they advertise them on television now too, especially the shingles vaccine.
Yeah.
Uh, you see the, you know, that's been around, the hepatitis vaccine, and that's an expensive one, uh, but they're, they are around.
For ammonia?
Pneumonia, yeah.
Pneumonia, I'm sorry.
Yeah, pneumonia.
Yeah, they, they tell you to get them all.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, thank you, Peter. And we will let you know what we find out.
Oh, sure, I appreciate it.
Uh, next item, inspectors' reports. Do you have any other reports?
No.
Okay. Um, number nine, Region Five Coalition Meeting, September 16th. This was a meeting that I attended in Middleborough, uh, a week ago Friday. And it dealt with preparedness, which is pretty appropriate based on the governor's proclamation. And what they did was, uh, the mantra of see something, say something. It was along those lines. And this security company came in and made a presentation to the communities that were there. And it dealt with, um, how people react in certain circumstances. And the circumstances that they showed was, this was actually done at a hospital in, uh, outside of Boston. It was pre-arranged with the security people and the hospital administration, but the employees didn't know about it. But the scenario was a van pulled up unmarked right at the, right at the entrance, under the canopy, not the ER, but the public drive-up, uh, where you might drop off an ambulatory person. And there were a couple of employees standing outside. The van pulled up, two men got out with hoodies, so it was hard to see what they looked like or anything. Uh, they weren't wearing any kind of clothing that would indicate they were a service company. Um, they went around to the back of the van and inside the van, there was a camera. And what you saw was, one of the men grabbed a big backpack and stuffed what looked like an AK-47 in it. And the other man grabbed a gym bag and he put a similar weapon in his. They closed the doors, walked right through the front door and the employees outside were watching them. And they looked, the two employees looked at one another as if to say, "Who is that?" But nobody even made a phone call to say, "Two men have just entered the building and we're not sure what this is about, but they're carrying bags." And, uh, the, the filming followed them and they happened to go to the administration office where the administrator was waiting to find out what was going to happen. They walked by a number of people in the various halls, the elevator, there were, there were, uh, patients in wheelchairs, there were medical people, there were visitors. Not one person even blinked an eye. So, the rest of it was, what you should do is something like, if you see something, you say something. And some people were, were thinking, "Well, if I say I saw something strange and they, they didn't turn out to be strange, I could lose my job." But the point of the security company was, that is not what the concern is. You report it and you let security or administration deal with it, but at least say something. They will investigate it and they will determine if, uh, these people have a legitimate reason to be in the building. And, uh, then the other thing they talked about was if in fact, this turned into an active shooter situation, they provided training a few days later to staff about, you, you can't lock down a hospital. You've got surgery going on, you've got training, you, all of this stuff is going on. Um, so what they did was they focused on certain areas. If you're in the operating room and the hospital goes into lockdown, this is what has to happen. Now, the doctors obviously have to keep doing what they're doing, but other people and they have to take action, whether it's to barricade a door or if you're in a visiting, visiting somebody and the hospital goes into lockdown, what you should do in that patient room. Um, so it was a very interesting presentation and they gave us the handouts, the material I brought back in those bags. Uh, the, uh, it lasted, the presentation lasted about an hour, then we had some question and answer period. But this security company deals with some of the largest facilities that are easily recognized. Major hospitals in Boston, Foxwoods Resort Casino, um, various police departments. And what they do with police departments is, uh, basically work together, see what procedures are, what happens, and then they, um, talk about what they have, what they have for recommendations. And, um, they deal with schools, some of the major universities and the security at those facilities. So, that was what that meeting was about. It was my first time attending a, uh, Region Five Coalition Meeting. And it, uh, it turned out to be very worthwhile, so, um, I think that, I know that we have, we have training, we've already had training in town for certain types of issues and, um, this was, this was good for me because I wasn't involved with the initial training that took place. So, any public input, all of our public. Uh, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Do either of you have anything? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Now, second that motion.
Motion made and seconded and all in favor?
Aye.
Post?